It is five thirty-two, so.
All right.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Madison County Board of Education Central Office. We've got a full house tonight. Mr. Heath Jones, will you mind praying over the meeting, sir?
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to gather this evening. Thank you for your immediate blessings. I ask that you treat with all of us as we conduct business on behalf of all the students of Madison County. Also ask that you deal with everyone as they leave here this evening. You can say when returning home safely. We ask all the students here first to say amen.
Amen. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. I recommend approval of the agenda date of February twenty twenty twenty-five.
Be, uh, yeah.
May.
The bill long day. Motion.
For all y'all, it's supposed to be motion and second, not me.
I've caught up.
So I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend approval of the minutes dated January ninth and twenty-third of twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor? MCSS recognition, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir. As you can see, we have a full house tonight because this is one of the nights that we really enjoy seeing all the hard work that goes into the school system. This is, you know, an opportunity to recognize student achievement as well as staff and school achievement. So we will start off with the school. And recently, Lynn Fanning Elementary School was recognized as a most improved performing school, and they were invited down to the state board meeting, and they were presented with a resolution there. And Ms. Bass went down, as well as Ms. McAlvin, the principal. But she's not here tonight, but we do have Ms. Allison Vernon, who is the assistant principal at Lynn Vanning. And if you'll come on up, Allison. And then we have a copy of the resolution. And is this her copy of Ms. Bass? They have their copy already. But if we could go ahead and get a picture with Allison and recognize the school for their achievement. And this is one of twenty-five points. All right, so Mr. President and Board, we will now begin with our student presentations as far as our recognitions. And I'm going to turn it over to the athletic administrator, Matt Rogers. And based on, we have a, we have an order up there, but based on who's here and who's not yet, Matt's going to go ahead and, and present them as they are available.
Right from the, from the get-go. So I'm actually going to start with Buckhorn tonight, move our way to, down to Sparkman, and then over to Hazel Green. We're still waiting on Bryce McLeary. He should have run here. I think he would have gotten here a little bit faster. But we'll start with Buckhorn Swim back in the fall. So Buckhorn sophomore Liberty Medea is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five HSA Class Six and Seven A, two-hundred individual medley state champion. Liberty is the only, the third Buckhorn swimmer in program history to win a state championship. Liberty has been swimming for the Bucks for four years, beginning with the program in the seventh grade. Liberty is a hard worker, and this is shown in her accomplishments. Liberty has won the High Point Award, awarded to the swimmer who scores the most points for three consecutive years as a Buckhorn swimmer. Liberty scored an impressive two-hundred-and-forty-eight points in the regular swim season this year. Liberty is also part of the twenty twenty-four All-North Alabama High School Swim League team, an exclusive group reserved for those who finish in the top two at the NAHSSL Championship Meet. In this year's NAHSSL Championship Meet, Liberty finished top two in the one-hundred breaststroke and fifty freestyle. Liberty is an amazing athlete, but more importantly, a kind teammate and a perfect example of what someone can accomplish with dedication and a positive attitude. Head coach Amelia Bynmroer and assistant Mary Carter could not be more proud of Liberty. Congratulations once again to Liberty Medea, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five HSA Class Six and Seven A Individual Medley State Champion. Congratulations, ladies. All right, moving on to Buckhorn Track. Buckhorn's Marcus Lee had an exceptional season this year, demonstrating both talent and dedication. A driven and supportive teammate, he yearly assists his younger peers in learning the high jump and triple jump. Marcus began his track career last year during the outdoor season, but his progress was interrupted when he broke his collarbone, limiting him to just a few competitions. Despite being unable to participate in the high jump due to his injury, he still managed to qualify for the state meet in both the triple and long jump events. This indoor season marked Marcus' return to full health in his first indoor track season. He competed in his first pentathlon, where he placed seventh overall, and also participated in the sixty-meter hurdles and one-thousand-meter events. In the triple jump, Marcus achieved impressive results. Seventh place at the Magic City Invitational, fifth at the Icebreaker Invitational, third at the MLK Invitational, and eighth at the state meet with a personal record PR of a forty-three, eight-point-seven-five. He also placed fourth in the long jump in the Last Chance Meet, setting a season PR of nineteen-seven-five. In the high jump, Marcus' performance was outstanding. He claimed first place in four of the five meets he participated in and second place in the remaining meet. His perseverance culminated in the state championship in the high jump, where he set a new PR of six foot four inches. Head coach Lisa Morgan would like to acknowledge Rodney Keaton and Heather Hendricks for their dedication and hard work in helping Marcus improve the high jump, long jump, and triple jump. Their efforts have been invaluable in Marcus' success this season. Once again, congratulations to Marcus Lee, this year's Class Six A Indoor High Jump Champion. Congratulations, sir. All right, moving on to Sparkman Indoor Track. Coach McNeely, the head coach, is unable to join us tonight. He's running his outdoor program this evening and wasn't able to join us. But he's been here enough. I think he gets the gist of it. We have quite a few track championships from over at Sparkman with Coach McNeely. So we're actually recognizing two different championship events this year. First, the Sparkman Boys Four-by-two-hundred-meter relay began the season on December fourth, winning with a time of one-thirty-seventy-three. At the same meet, Joe Quez Keith competed in the four-hundred-meter dash and placed first with a time of forty-eight-seventy-nine. After the winter break, Joe Quez competed one more, once more in the four-hundred-meter dash in the Last Chance Invitational on January twenty-fifth, placing first with a time of forty-eight-eight-seven. At the state meet held on January thirty-first, Joe Quez Keith made history by not only winning the four-hundred-meter dash and capturing the state championship, but also breaking the seven-A state record with a time of forty-seven-eight-one. His time is ranked number fourteen in the nation. Joe Quez ended the indoor season, breaking four school records in the four-hundred-meter dash, sixty-meter hurdles, and four-by-two-hundred-meter relay, as well as the four-by-four-hundred-meter relay. The Sparkman Boys Four-by-two-hundred-meter relay team, consisting of Joe Quez Keith, Elijah Vaughn, Caleb Thompson, and Braden Goode, also left a state champ, as state champions, as they captured the title with a season-best time of one-twenty-eight-twenty-eight, breaking their school records set in December. They are currently ranked thirtieth in the nation in the four-by-two-hundred-meter. Congratulations once again to these young men, as well as Coach Jeff McNeely, on their four-by-two-hundred-meter relay and four-hundred-meter state indoor championships. Congratulations. Trying to stall just a little bit. All right, we're going to move forward with the Hazel Green Esports and hope that Bryce makes it here shortly. So again, Hazel Green Esports, they're this year's state champion in Splatoon, okay? Esports is a fairly new sport. It's been sanctioned by the HSA. And again, couldn't be more proud to see one of our teams compete at the highest level and win a state championship. So again, here's the resolution for the Hazel Green Esports team. Whereas the Hazel Green High School Esports Team won a dominant victory over a W.P. Davidson High School team with a final score of three-zero in Splatoon Three to win the Fall Twenty Twenty-Four State Championship on December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. And whereas this outstanding accomplishment culminates an impressive season record of eight-and-one, and whereas team members are Audrey Benson, Georgia Morgan, Isabella Summers, Case and Fudge, and Caden Ned, and whereas the Hazel Green High School Esports Team has a history of success that warrants recognition, and now therefore, it is resolved that the Superintendent of the Madison County Board of Education congratulate Hazel Green High School Esports Team and their coach, acknowledge this achievement and express due acclamation for their outstanding accomplishments. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be presented to the team members, Coach William Travis Bailey, and Principal Dr. E. Quinn Hedden, and that the words be set in perpetuity upon the minutes of the Madison County Board of Education, dated the twentieth day of February twenty twenty-five. Congratulations.
That's Call of Duty now, that'd be.
All right. And last but not least, we're going to recognize Bryce McLeary on his two state championship victories. I have, you know, full faith, I was telling Coach earlier, that I think we'll probably see him again in May, hopefully, for his outdoor championships. But Bryce McLeary is this year's Six-A HSA Cross Country State Champion. Bryce was the anchor for the Hazel Green High School Cross Country Team this season, being the fastest runner on our team of forty-seven. Bryce was a remarkably skilled and consistent runner in twenty twenty-four, always striving to improve and set historic highs in school records while taking time during races to help the next generation of Hazel Green Cross Country runners. Amid a rigorous new season and workout regimen established by the former collegiate runners, Bryce managed to set himself apart by having the most successful season in the MCSS history in his illustrious career as a Hazel Green Trojan. Bryce McLeary's record-breaking twenty twenty-four cross-country season marked the most successful year in Hazel Green High School in the MCSS history. The road to the success began in twenty twenty-three, when Bryce became the first runner in school history to break the sixteen-minute barrier for a five-k at fifteen forty-five eighty-seven. He took another step towards history when he became the first runner in school history to win a race, when he won the HSA Six-A Section Six Meet at Palmer Park. When the twenty twenty-four cross-country season began, Bryce hit the ground running by winning the opening race and channeled that momentum into seven placements, five podiums, and four wins in just, in just eight events. After claiming the Six-A Boys Cross Country State Championship, Bryce McLeary entered the year's indoor season as a favorite to win the Six-A Boys sixteen-hundred-meter and thirty-two-hundred-meter races. On February first, he indeed captured both the state titles by winning the sixteen-hundred-meter with a time of four-seventeen and the thirty-two-hundred-meter with a time of nine-thirty-two. He broke his own school records in the sixteen-hundred-meter by running a record-shattering time of four-fifteen and in the thirty-two-hundred-meter with a time of nine-eighteen. Those times saw him ranked first in Six-A in both events for the entire season. He finished the season ranked second in the state of Alabama in the sixteen-hundred-meter and twentieth in the entire nation. He also finished the season ranked third in Alabama in the thirty-two-hundred-meter and thirty-fourth nationally. Bryce and his teammates were led by first-year head coach Brittany Wood, first-year assistant coach Tim Wood, track head coach Raymond Gilstrap, and cross-country assistant Colton Vaughn. Congratulations once again to Bryce McLeary, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five HSA Class Six-A Cross Country sixteen-hundred-meter indoor and thirty-two-hundred-meter indoor state champion. Congratulations, Bryce.
Gentlemen, do you have any district highlights from your districts that you want to share?
Do we need to?
No, you don't need to.
Hazel Green shining pretty good.
My district highlights pretty much the same as throughout the system. We've begun our baseball seasons. We've begun our softball seasons. We've begun our boys and girls soccer seasons. And also, our band is shifting from marching band to well into a symphony band program. Results for all these programs in Sparkman District are very promising. I look forward to seeing a meeting like this at the beginning of next year as we share the awards in the spring.
Everybody good?
I've got one. We had a young lady, senior at Buckhorn High School, Miss Emily Dotson. She was selected as a national semifinalist for National Arms Society Scholarship. She's one of six recipients in the state of Alabama, so want to give her a shout out tonight. Great job, Miss Emily, for that. And then our JROTC program, I think, competed this weekend, this past weekend, and had a, had a good showing there. So good job for them as well.
Jones?
Yes, sir. I've got two items at Madison Crossroads School that I'd like to highlight. So back last year, we started the process of trying to acquire grants for a playground upgrade there on that school campus. So we're officially having a ribbon cutting for that project the Friday, March twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, February twenty-eighth. So we're very excited about that. Those grants were written and funded by the school's PTO and then also Senator Sam Givhan and Representative Andy Witt. So we're very thankful for their partnership and looking forward to that ceremony on Friday. The next item is centrally located at Madison Crossroads, but it's really for the entire community. I just got word today that a nonprofit out of Decatur, One Gen Away, is going to host a mobile food pantry at the Madison Crossroads Community Center. Logistically, we didn't think that we'd be able to do it on the campus of Madison Crossroads, so we contacted Commissioner Vanderver, and he's allowing us to use the community center. So that's going to be March first. I don't have a time on that yet. The One Gen Away is going to be posting a flyer out to the public, so. But it's about a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars worth of goods, and so that will be passed out. I think it's roughly two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty people that it will, so. But I just want to take an opportunity to thank all of our partners in that and getting that funded. It's a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, but it's roughly about eight thousand dollars is what it costs to, and it, just the cost of the semi trucks and to get the goods here, so. But, so looking forward to that, March first. There'll be additional information sent out hopefully by tomorrow. So, Mr. President, that's all I have from District Four.
All right. We are going to move on.
Oh, we got one.
Yes, sir.
Nationals, I think, was last week for our cheerleaders at Buckhorn High School. And they had another impressive show in there, too, so I want to give them a shout out there. I believe, I can't remember exactly which team it was, but we're national champions again, too, so good job, good job there.
JV and varsity.
JV and varsity.
JV and varsity.
Good job.
Mr. Superintendent? Administrative items?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna go on to the administrative items of the meeting, but if y'all want to stay, y'all are more than welcome. If y'all want to sit here and be bored for the next, all right.
Okay.
We're going to take a picture out here, so support swimming.
Hey, but thank you all for coming.
Next time, we put one at the very end. Hey. Did we adjourn? We could have been over the meeting.
Yeah. We got one more item, line item, come back in the same room. Y'all ready to go on? Administrative items, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Hedden, did you not get in the picture when we took the picture?
No, sir.
You want to call them back in?
No.
Okay.
We thought your thoughts made, but we're a little tired from playing.
Yes, sir. I'm learning, he's more. When you tell your wife, I said, oh, I'm.
All right. You ready, sir?
Mm-hmm.
I recommend that the board declares a retired school bus as surplus property and approve the donation of the retired school bus to the Madison County Fair.
Motion.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend, I recommend approval of the McKee Road Property Sewer easements as submitted. Easements.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
I, I, I've already talked to Joe about this, and y'all might not feel the same, but we're giving up an easement across the whole property, and twenty-seven thousand dollars is what we're getting credit for? It's going to cost us a hundred-and-thirty thousand. To me, that's a little lopsided, because they're going to make a lot more money, but that's just me. Because when that easement comes in and people tie onto it over on rubber bed, that's where they're, you know, we don't get anything out of that, correct? The only thing we would get, the only thing we're going to get is if they tap on those subdivisions, if they do something.
If we would allow a tap on somewhere on our easement on our property, then, right, I think we should write it up where it's a private, that they would, by board approval, pay a fee to tap into it. But if it's not our property, then it's not. What they value twenty-seven on is basically the value of a half acre of property. Now, say out loud that this is what they've come back to, the tap fee or the reservation fee for our sewer on that is estimated at a hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand. They're made of offer twenty-seven, so we'd be paying about a hundred-and-thirty thousand for reservation or a tap fee for sewer from here. That's their offer for that.
It's going to cost them more to go around fifty-three and come back down. I mean, so it, I mean, maybe I'm wrong, but.
So we're getting a twenty-seven thousand dollar credit on the tap fee?
Correct. Now, I think the purpose of tonight, because we don't have the legal description of either easement, so we're not approving that, but I think if we can prove that they can start doing the engineering, if we wanted to go back and negotiate rights, I'm open to that.
But if we.
Can we modify the item?
I'm just one person. I'm just, that's just a question. I mean, that's your district? But that, that's going to save, I mean, if they have to turn out and go down fifty-three to come back down, it's going to cost them a lot more, twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I'm not saying that it hit them for all of it. I'm just saying, I, I mean, we are a school system in the county. The taxes are low.
They are.
I mean.
They are bringing sewer to our front door. When they charge them there and they can charge here, we can talk about that.
So tonight, we're just approving them to go ahead and start their engineering phase of it, but we're not actually.
We'll have to have a legal description, right, Ms. Thompson? The legal description come back in front of you for final approval.
So tonight, can we modify this for approval for the design of the easement?
If the superintendent's willing to change his recommendation.
I, I just would like.
I would, I would like to have more discussion. I would, I would like to have more discussion on it, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
I think we just need to have more discussion on it.
Yeah. I'm not saying, I mean, I'm one board member.
Nobody, no, but we're not against it.
Yeah, I'm not against it, I'm just.
Can you table it until you have more information?
If we table it, Joseph Howard, does that put them off, or does that, or do we need to approve the easement so they can get started on designing and all?
No, 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 I mean, we're not in that big of a hurry, in the sense that until it's to our property, they can't go past us anyway. So, I would say, you know, we've still got several months. If you want to table it and have a discussion, I, I'm open to that.
Let's do that, let's table it.
I think so, because if they go forward with the planning, if they say, if we come back and say, we want this, they say, amount, they say, no, we are going to go around it, then.
Joseph, do you have any concern about this impairing your ability to use the property like you need to?
No, I do not. No, we, from our map that we looked at last time, they will be going to the south end of our property, just outside of the red land, so that they don't penetrate with that, and then out the easement road to Old Railroad. So, I don't see that it would impair us in any future development or design or anything.
But they could have to work on it, I mean.
So, do I need to ask for a motion to table this? Or do I?
The board can just generally bring the table in.
Okay. Let's do that then.
I don't want to slow the process down, I just want us to think, think through the whole amount.
Okay. Can I get a motion to table this until we have a little more information?
Motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion on the tables, tabling of line item B?
Mr. Jones, do you have any, I mean.
Mr. Kazork, is there, I, you've obviously been working on this, so I don't want to delay anything, but I also want some questions answered. But is us tabling tonight, is that going to hinder you in any way?
No, sir.
Okay.
It, it won't, and, and if that's, you know, what we need to do, I'm perfectly comfortable with that. You know, another thirty, sixty, ninety days is not going to slow our progress down in construction at all.
Okay.
I don't want to slow nothing down, of course, but.
Well, if we're good with that, then we've got a few board meetings in between the thirty, sixty, ninety days. I mean, we can, yeah, just more discussion on it.
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. All those to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Superintendent?
I recommend approval of the Spartman Middle School softball lighting project as submitted.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the textbook committee selections as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion. Bill's second.
It don't matter.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the MCS as artificial intelligence policy as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry. Me.
Me.
I recommend approval of the assistant principal guidelines as submitted.
Motion.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
One thing I'd like to make sure everybody's aware of, every assistant principal we fund locally costs the system roughly one hundred, ten thousand dollars. The more we can get the state to pick up on our assistant principal, that frees us up money to do other things with our personnel. So, if the state was to pick up three assistant principalships that are currently local, that would free you up about three hundred thousand dollars, roughly speaking. And so, I just want to mention that before we vote.
I agree with you. I do think what we're doing is very needed, and so, that, I mean, that's why I vote for it every time. So, I mean, I, I wish they would pick up some more of it, but I, I think it's, I think we're doing a good service to our students.
I agree with you.
I sent y'all an email too earlier, and Ms. O'Bannon had, again, had it for us, that locally, we have twenty seven assistants that are being paid for by the state, and then we're picking up the other twenty, twenty-five, and so, you're investing right now two point, two point eight million for. Yeah, so, it's almost half and half from what the state's paying and you're paying.
But we're not the only system who has to fund locally our administrators, because of the paperwork has increased dramatically since the twenty-eight years that I've been in education. It used to be that we could quickly, discipline, we have effective ways, and with the paperwork that's required by both the federal and state government, and sometimes less cooperation from the parents. I think many systems are requiring local administrative units, and I think we should lobby as a group, our legislators, to increase that allocation.
Well, you're also paying a large portion of counselors as well.
I agree with that too.
It's counselors and APs.
I agree with that too.
Is the information out there, just kind of on that subject of what, as was mentioned last week, the state of the schools, of what we are being mandated as from the state, that are we required to pay out of local money to meet those? Is there, is there any kind of number that we can get on that, or?
It's a mighty big number, yes.
Yeah.
Does that make sen, I mean, that makes sense?
Are you talking about just APs, or you?
No, no, no.
There's a mandate, there's a dollar amount.
No, sir, there's not anything like that. Now, A group, we can pull whatever category you're talking about, with like the federal laws and the state laws that govern, govern spad. That's the big unfunded mandate, pre-K. I mean, it depends on the needs of your system and the students you have in those.
Gotcha.
So, there's not a magic number. I can actually pull whatever you need and as far as what you want to say.
All right, I'll think of some more specifics if I have any, so, I just didn't know.
And I, I mean, I know this is not the time, but we are in discussion mode about AP. We need, I want to update on where we're at on the AP money funding.
The AP money.
Not the AP, the pre-K, I'm sorry, me, pre-K funding.
Oh, we're, the OSR, where we're at on that?
Yeah.
And that's, and that's a really interesting, glad, glad you brought that up. We've had several conversations with Representative Jenny Ross, who was over the OSR, and she wasn't even aware that the legislators were being used as a tool, that, that we weren't allowed to charge tuition, and that it was the legislation that was claiming this. So, she's working on this from the House level, and I talked with Ed Nichols, who was just down there last week, and he talked with Representative Ross, and there's another senator that's in the other chamber that's also working on this. So, we have legislation now working on the OSR and the Office of School Radiance, those pre-Ks, as far as allowing us to at least charge a tuition, because it was, according to Jenny Ross, it was, Dr. Ross, it was never, the, the tuition was never supposed to go away, that was not something that was in. So, there's a lot of, he said, she said, going on down there at the state, and so, they're working through some of that, so we think there's some changes there. Plus, I know Ms. Bass, when she refigured some of the numbers, it, it's a lot better, the, the estimate is about half of what we thought it was going to be, so that's.
So, it's about three hundred?
It, it'll actually be a little bit less than that, I think it'll probably be around two hundred thousand towards all, as opposed to what we were thinking, because they gave us some increases this year. But they also, we just found out, I don't know, it was only a month or so ago, when I started questioning some things, they said, oh, well, there are some grants that were given to offset the tuition collection. We had no communication about that or anything. And then we got a random deposit last week for, to offset some of that for this current, this current, where they fill those gaps. And then when I asked them about it, this is a terrible communication. When I asked them about it, they were like, oh, yeah, they probably just forgot to send the notification. And then two days later, they sent the same amount of money a second time, and we. And so, and we had to decide whether we were sending that back or whether we were going to draw down less the next time, and so, anyway, all that to say, there's some communication there that we're just trying to work through, but I'm optimistic that if they gave us some offset funding this year, that maybe we could get a little more offset money next year, and it won't be as bad.
Well, if they send some more cash, that check too. Yeah.
So, we, we put an update on next, next meeting, give Ms. Bass a chance to put the numbers together and give us an update on that.
For the exact amount?
Yeah.
But since that's been brought up tonight, everything has a go this year.
We, we, uh, been enrolling, we're ready to do drawings, and probably about three weeks, we'll start the drawings, and so, yeah, we're.
And can we charge tuition this year, or did they cut that out?
They won't give me an answer.
So, we, okay.
So, forgiveness is better than permission.
But if they'll fund it better, you know, then I'd love to have free pre-K for our kids, obviously. But if they'll fund it better, then we won't have to, our title on our schools don't collect tuition anyway. So, it would just affect those non-title classrooms that we have.
The biggest piece we didn't do is we didn't apply for any more at this point, till we get this all worked out.
Okay.
So, we're running what we currently have.
Last year's number's the same?
The, the, the number of pre-K units that we have, we're keeping those, and that's where we're at. After talking with Jenny Ross at the superintendent's district meeting, she definitely was not happy about hearing what, what had occurred. So, I, I envisioned that we do have some, some legitimate legislation down there, that legislators that are working to get a resolution to this issue.
Well, thank y'all for doing it. I guess we need to vote, don't we?
Yeah, so, back on line item F, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I recommend approval of the academic guide scheduling component as submitted.
Motion. That's the, is this the, yes. Did we get a second?
No, I have a motion. Second. I have a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
You want to go? No, go ahead. I would like to know what X is.
We don't know what X is yet. We're still getting the, we're getting, I explained that in there, that what we're trying to find out is exactly who's meeting the requirements, because when, after listening to the students and the teachers, we found out that now, you know, the AB schedule kind of got pushed off to the side, because we have short period, or fifth period blocks, or skinny periods, or whatever you want to call it, that are being run on certain times, and we're running blocks on other times, and we found out that we're not meeting the minimum state requirement. So, what we're doing is we're gathering all the data for all the schools' blocks and all the schools' skinny periods, and we're going to figure out what exactly has to be met in order for it to be the minimum amount of time to, you know, meet the state requirement of ten, eighty hours, based on a, on a semester period. So, as soon as we have the Xs, we will let you guys know what they are. So, what we're basically saying is that the skin, you know, the blocks are going to run at whatever that minimum number is. They can be longer, but they can't be any shorter than what. And it's also going to be based on what the skinny period is, because the longer your skinny period is, the shorter your blocks can be. The shorter, you know, and, because it's all a matter of a total of ten, a hundred and eighty hours. We don't meet the day requirements, because we don't go a hundred and eighty full days. We have two half-days in there, so we actually go a hundred and seventy-eight days, full days, because of the half-days. So, we have to go with the ten, eighty, so we need to make sure we meet those hours.
So, when, when the governor declares a state of emergency, th, those, those hours disappear?
Correct. Yeah, those do not count against us when she declares a state of emergency. And we have some built-in time, but every time we take a day, then we have to make sure that we make those up or that we have that covered. It's always, first semester typically runs around eighty-eight or eighty-nine, and then second is usually the ninety-two to ninety-one, depending on how it is. But you've got two half-days at the end of first for final exams for the high schools, and then you have two half-days for the high schools at the end for exams as well and graduations, so. So, that's what we're going to do, is we're going to find out exactly, because we've had everything from seventy, seventy-six minute, seventy-five, seventy-six minute blocks, all the way up to, majority of them are running around eighty-two. Most of them are good, but we need to make sure everybody's okay.
So, i, is it eighty, or is it, what's the number?
It depends on how long that skinny block is, again. If your skinny block is longer than, because the skinny block is part of the instructional day.
Correct.
So, if you take, if it's, if it's four eighties, that's three hundred and twenty minutes. Okay?
Skinny block doesn't count toward the.
No, then you would add the skinny block back in, so as long as your skinny block's forty, then you're at your, your three hundred and sixty minutes. We actually need, on the short semester, we need three hundred and sixty-eight, almost sixty-nine minutes, so, for the first semester, because it's shorter on days, in order to meet the halfway point.
Mr. Kewick, I'm, I'm very favorable of voting for this, but, but I would be much more happy if I knew the exact numbers.
Well, we don't have those yet.
Well, I know, I know that, so my next question is, how long will it take you to get those numbers?
We, we did principal reviews with the, with the high school principals on Tuesday, and so, we asked them for all that data. We're just trying to confirm, because some of them were supposed to get back with us yet. So, we should have that hopefully by, I would think by the, the March seventh meeting, for sure, we should have that data.
What schools are doing the skinny blocks?
All of them.
All of them, okay. I don't know if there's some that wouldn't do it.
Yep, everybody has a skinny block. Some call it sk, skinny block. Doc calls it a red zone. Spartman High calls it spark time. There's, Wind Time is down at New Hope. So, they each have their own name for what it is, but it's.
Like flex time and stuff.
Flex time's another one that's massive.
Okay.
But it's basically, what it is, is it's a fifth period that they're using it for different things. And so, that's what, it was, it's designed to be remediation and extensions. That's what it's supposed to be for. And depending on what school you're in, they're using it for, you know, different things, but that's primarily. A lot of them do the CERT for ACT, they do a lot of, there's AP prep that's going on during that time period. There's, I mean, some of them are offering courses during that time period, so it just depends on the school. So, what we're saying is that it's going to be remediation, and it's going to be for extensions, but we've got to figure out what the magic number is, like. So, like, if you're going to have X number of minutes in your skinny, then you're going to need to make sure that we have this as far as. So, that's what we're trying to do, is we're going to get down to what exactly, the two Xs will be replaced with a specific number that says, you have to meet your block for at least this amount of time. You can go beyond it, but you, you're going to have to meet it at X number, and it's going to be somewhere in the eighty-minute period, you know, that's, that's where it seems to be fitting.
Okay, we all know I started off dumb tonight by saying me, but I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is if the skinny block counts as, as time, as academic time, instruction time, then where's the problem?
Okay, typically, when the block first came out.
The class has to be that long.
Correct, that's the block period.
Okay.
In order to get a Carnegie unit, you have to have X number of contact hours with the student.
Got you.
And so, and I'm going to use mythical numbers, if you don't mind.
Yeah, sure.
Let's say, let's say, let's say we're doing the old-fashioned block schedule, which was ninety-six minutes long. But in order to get a Carnegie unit, you need to have, you can teach up to eighty-eight minutes in that one class.
Okay.
So, you can take that eight minutes from each one of those four classes, four times eight is thirty-two, you can have a thirty-two minute skinny block.
Right.
That, and the problem we have is that these numbers may or may not give us the right, uh, support.
Well, my, my disconnect was the, was the instruction time. We're still counting it as instruction time, that's why, that's where, that's where he lost me. So, so, and I, I don't want to put Doc on, on, but my understanding, we're only do, Hazel Green's only doing it twice a week, the skinny.
The intervention.
Intervention, okay.
But that period meets every day?
No. Tuesdays and Thursdays, correct?
We have.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Doc.
It's always one to two of that at the everything or back toward everything. But the goal was to have remediation and intervention during part of the school day. When we started with our POC process, and, and one of the things was how do we build the skills that students are missing without taking, taking teachers outside of their class, without making teachers have to stay after school or come before school? So, about twelve, twelve, twelve years ago, the skinny was introduced at Hazel Green High School. It was introduced at that time mostly to try to help athletics. Kids would get out of class and they would go to their, their respective team. Well, about seven or eight years ago, we said, no, we need to take this time and use it for remediation. Well, the first year we did remediation, five days a week, they were going to class, they were going to class. What we start hearing from teachers and from students is it was too much, and that nothing was going on, in a sense, we were wasting time. So, uh, we continued to try to refine, um, our remediation time. And so, what we came up, we, we said, what if we do remediation twice a week? But on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we teach class. So, everyone goes to a regular class. Cause the teacher said during, during, um, remediation and intervention, that students weren't paying attention because they weren't in the grade. So, that's why we went to, um, offering classes during that time. So, what we do, from the month of August, when we start school, we go skinny block every day, and that's the class. We start remediation on Tuesday, Thursdays, after Labor Day. And we go from Labor Day until we, um, finish pre, pre-ACT and work key. Once we finish pre-ACT and work keys, we go back to skinny block all day, which is class all day until the end of the semester. When we come back in January, the month of January is, is skinny block all day, every day. February starts, we start prepping for the ACT. So, we go to our red zone on Tuesdays and Thursdays during that time, until the ACT is over. Once the ACT is finished, we go back to the skinny. When April comes, we go back to red zone a little bit for AP classes. So, those students, the AP students get to see their AP teacher again before the AP test. Now, also during Tuesdays and Thursdays, when we have our P L C collaborative meetings with our teachers. We do it with our, with our four core classes, so that's math, science, history, and, and math, science, history, and I'm missing one.
English.
English, yes. And so, they come, let's say today, we had our P L C collaborative meeting for science. This is where we go in and we look at the data. We look at CERT data, we look at I R E D data, we look at our Common Form and Assessment data. And today, they explain to everyone the essential standards that they've chosen for, for each, each subject, whether it's chemistry, um, physical science, biology. And so, Tuesday, we did history. Next week, we'll have math, and we'll have math, and we'll have, um, P L A, P L C collaborative meetings. Well, that's kind of what we tried to do, but this is, this has been a five-year project, uh, what works best, uh, for remediation. Uh, within that time also for our special needs kids, they, we came up with a system to send them back to their, their case manager during this time, so they could do transition goals, and also help to get us off of T S, we're on, we're TSA, T S I, I keep getting them letters and stuff. We were a T S I school for our, our special education population, they were performing the way they should. So, when we created that, so now the case managers were able to work with them on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and, and guys, they did it. We came off of T S I stats. So, it, it, it's worked for us, but it's still, as we, it, it, we're still trying to make it back. Because what we still get, every year, we talk to our teachers, what's working, what's not working, is two days enough, is, um, is two days too much? And for, for, for me, I fight a battle every day because, you know, when we started, teachers said, I don't wanna do this, this is another prep. Let's not do this, it's another prep, it's not gonna help. But when I report card grade, when I'm, uh, seven points or six points, then they saw through to their label, and they kind of bought in even more to that. So, and everybody's different, but that's kind of what we do and how we do our remediation and our, our, our skinny block for that. And, and one last thing for you. Skinny block, I, I, I know, we, we say, we, we weren't gonna offer core classes at first, but our team's teachers, they can only teach math, you know, your math team, you can only teach math. So, there, there aren't any math electives out there for you to take in order for you to continue to get your teams, teams, um, contract. Sciences, science, there's a few, but there's not many. So, that's why we, we said, okay, if we put geometry, if we put, uh, forensics, if we put biology, maybe we can reduce the number of students in those classes, and we can go year-long. And those students that are struggling, maybe we can have them year-long so we can help them understand. You know, we have some kids that failed geometry twice, so we put them in the skinny block, say, well, let's try it year-long. Let's, let's slow it down a little bit for you. So, that's why we, we chose to, um, it's twofold, to add core classes to the skinny. One, there's no electives for math teachers, and every math teacher at Hazel Green High School is on a team's contract. Every science teacher at Hazel Green High School is on a team's contract. So, that, that kind of ties our hands a little bit when we go and look at, at our schedule. Now, what it'll do, our blocks will get larger. Our blocks will get larger, if we do away with the skinny, we'll make it work. But we have to offer five lunches just for space and time. So, that, that, that's carved into some of our lunchtime also. And if we, we take some time and add to lunch, then we have to look at our lunch ladies, and what time do they have to leave? And how can we get all of our kids, um, get, get them in the lunch and get them out of the lunch too? So, I said a lot, but that's kind of where we are, technically, what we did.
So, as you can see, it's not, it's not as clear-cut as one size fits all. But, what we do need, and no one's saying that we don't have skinnies anymore, or fifth period. It still has that in the policy that we keep, that the, the principals can have that fifth period, whatever they wanna call it, you know, red zone, spark, uh, flex time.
That's what I was throwing out, was the names, every, I guess every school is different.
Yeah, they all, they all have their own, right.
So-
But we need to make sure that the time, the seat time equals that, that number. That mean, that's the key, as long as it meets the hours, then we're okay as far as them being able to get their courses. If they're not meeting hours, and when you look at a semester, if you split the, you know, the, the a hundred and eighty days in half into ninety days, and the ten forty, you cut that in half, it's, I mean, the ten eighty, it's five hundred and forty hours. And so, you've got to have those hours in that semester, and it's already short because of the fact that we have the two half-days. So, again, we don't meet, cause the state law says, you, you get a hundred and eighty days as long as it's full, full day of instruction. Well, a full day is a six hours, and they say what a full day is. I gave you guys the Alabama code that, that outlined all that. So, we have to make sure that we, we have to function on the hours, is what we have to. So, we need to make sure that whatever the block has to be, like a minimum, that's what, if, you know, if the, if there's gonna be a minimum time for the skinny, and a minimum time for the block, then we meet the ten forty. If they wanna expand beyond that, that's, you know, that's where it's got those on there, a minimum of, cause we need to make sure. Cause like I said, we, we're going, I think yours are what, eighty-two, Quinn, eighty?
They're writing eighty?
Eighty?
Forty-seven.
Right, we have, we have eighties, we've got eighty-twos, we've got eighty-fours, we've got a seventy-six. So, like I said, we're going all over, and our blocks are anywhere from, the skinnies are, they're most of the skinnies are around forty minutes. But there's some that are greater, and some are a little shy of that. So, you know, we gotta make sure that, w- we gotta make sure that we got five forty. That's, if it was only got the five forty in the timeframe, then we're okay. And if they know that their block has to be eighty-two minutes, they can work with that, if they know that it's got, you know, this is what the minimum is, and then they're good as far as time.
You're just not gonna be able to give a credit in the skinny.
No, they can't, they, so what, what's great about Doc's system is, he offers seventeen more core classes in a year than another school his size. Cause he gets those seventeen teachers to teach an additional class.
And they're still meeting all the requirements.
And they're still meeting all the requirements, because-
In that skinny block.
Yeah, cause his other, think of it this way, his block is eighty minutes. His skinny is forty minutes, and it goes year-long. It's the same amount of time. Uh, so he's meeting the time requirements that way with that skinny block, but where a teacher may, his teachers, teachers at Buckhorn will only teach six classes a year on the block schedule. Doc's got seventeen teachers teaching seven. So, utilizing the same amount of teachers for, for that system and the way they have it set up, so.
So, you can actually offer the credit, if you take it year-long? Cause you've broken it up, okay? And that gives you the minimum time.
Right, but see, that's the other thing, is you gotta look at, they're not going every single day. And so, you gotta make sure that you're getting ten, you gotta, they gotta have the hours in for that course too. That's the other problem. The other thing is, is like, when you start adding credits, you know, now we're talking about a whole different thing. You know, that brings us back to that seven-period day. If it's, what's important is that kids have a academic setting for an entire year, because it's what's best for kids, whether we're talking about an AP kid, or a remediation kid, or a kid struggling in, in a certain content area, then you go to a seven-period day, and then you run it the whole year, and they're going, which is a conversation for, we're not to that point. That's a conversation that we need to talk about for next year and moving into next year, when, cause it's, it's too much for, to try and get done right now with, with registration coming in. But you gotta figure out, you know, that gets into what's best for kids. Is it seven-period day? Is it A Bs? Is it four-by-four block? And it's a philosophical, but the other piece is, like, if you're only going to, if you're having your skinny, and you're having it in August, and you're having your skinny in Oc- October, was it?
It roughly said September, October. Uh, we used to go, yeah, September, October, and then February to ACT.
Okay, so, we're not talking about a forty-minute for the entire year.
Are those, are those geometry kids, do they stay in, do they stay in geometry a year-long, or do they go to red zone?
They go to red zone too, they go to intervention.
For two days?
For two days.
Two days.
See, that's why, that's why when we heard about what the times were, we were like, we got a bigger problem with time right now than we do anything else. And we've got to get the time piece worked out. So, that's why we left the block schedule alone, basically giving the principals authority to go ahead and, and what the, what it says is, we run a eight, we run a four-by-four block, and it gives the principals some authority to add year-long classes. It doesn't talk about year-long classes as the priority with, turned into your block. It talks about the block first, and then some year-long classes.
So, so basically, what we're asking for is the number for the blocks, the minimum number of contact minutes for the block, to ensure that we meet the Carnegie unit requirements.
Correct, correct.
And I'm all for that, cause I think that that minimum should be uniform throughout the system.
I, well, I agree with that, totally.
And, you know, and, and as far as the skinny, if we're gonna use the skinny for, uh, something other than remediation, as an academic course, for example, it still has to meet those minimum contact requirements.
Correct, and that's the other pieces I-
Yeah, right. So, you know, I'm all for, for what you proposed, but I would like to see the numbers, and, and I-
Can, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
If we go that route, and, and I'm some way, is there a way that we say we're gonna move forward with this language right here, this setup of, of this right here? But when we go on there, when it says, some schools may offer a fifth period for remediation or extension, is we go that route and leave that language in there, are we gonna knock out being able to offer those core classes, if I'm saying that the right? Are we gonna be able to, are we, are we tying his hands and taking that away for something that worked for them, if we leave that language in there?
Yes.
A- a- as you pointed out, that might or might not be took. That depends on the number of minutes required in each block to get that Carnegie unit.
So, right, I'm, okay, so perfect scenario, if we keep it at the minimum of our core classes, where just magic numbers, I don't know, eighty-two, and we have, that other number's obviously-
Forty-one.
Forty-one.
And you can open, run a skinny all year long.
Year-long.
And get-
Do we know that that's meeting the requirements?
Right, I, I don't, I don't have a problem if a principal wants to do that, as long as it meets those time requirements.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I don't think we know what those time requirements are right now. I like the idea, I like where we're going with this, and I think this is appropriate.
Yeah, I fully understand what you're wanting, you know, as far as that, cause you gotta make sure everybody's meeting the stuff. But, with that language right there in that, if we, if we knew the numbers tonight, and say they were eighty and forty, just rough numbers, I'm just going, if we put those numbers in there tonight and say that, do we take that by this language? Is that saying that they can't do the, the year-long core class in that time period?
What you would need, but the, the thing is, is that you're gonna need to run that core class for that entire year.
Right.
It's gonna be, have to be five days a week for the core class to need, in order to meet that time requirement. If it, just saying basically eighty, forty, if you did eighty, forty, four eighties and a forty, you know, which puts you right at three hundred and sixty minutes. So, if you run ninety-day semester, you're right at, you're right at what you need.
But we don't have ninety-day semesters.
But we don't have ninety-day semesters, that's why I said, what we have to do is we have to set it up for whatever the short semester is. If we get the short semester in, then the, the longer one is fine. And typically what happens is, our short semester is first semester, and our longer is second, which is always better, because typically our weather comes in, in January, February timeframe, March timeframe. So, if we have the extra time there, that's just days we don't have to worry about making up, because we have a cushion for time on that side. So, that's why we're kind of basically looking at, how do we set this up for first semester so that we meet the time requirements? If we do that, then we know we're good on the second, you know what I mean? And so, that gives us a little cushion. So, like, for instance, right now, because of the extra time, we're okay with yesterday's, um, snow day, because we don't have to take the April's weather day yet. If we get more bad weather, we're eventually gonna have to take that day if we're out. So, that's kind of where we're at, but the, it, but it does hurt Doc's schedule, because if he's running a core class, he's got to run that entire year. You can't do it just three months out of the four, because then you're shortchanging on the hours.
Right. I, I-
Carnegie unit's a hundred and twenty hours of instruction. As, if I'm about to say about Alabama.
Yep.
A hundred and twenty hours of instruction.
So, you do-
How long would you need to get us that time?
Well, we just talked with the principals on, uh, Tuesday about getting their time. And we were gonna work, we, cause we wanted to work with our high school principals on it, and not have it, you know, so that it was a, a group effort. If we can, you know, I would like to have that wrapped up by, by April at the latest, to have the time requirements, because they're gonna need to know what they're doing too, right, Doc? I mean, but, you know, what the next step is to have, to get our high school principals together, and probably do it on a Zoom call, and Ms. Bass and the, we'll work with them, and try and, and make sure that what we're doing meets everybody's needs. We don't wanna take away their ability to create a schedule that works for their school, but we do wanna make sure what we're doing, we can say that we're uniform in the fact that you are meeting all the requirements for it to issue a grade and a minimum requirement, a Carnegie unit for, in the state of Alabama. So, that's kind of what, that's where we're at.
But, you know, I think, I think the, the big issue dealing with Hazel Green, and one of the things that we're talking about here, I think everybody understands the idea of a Carnegie unit, but how do you turn a skinny block into a Carnegie unit? Well, if we do, that depends on the time, and it depends on how many ti- if it's the, how much time is in that skinny block, and how often it meets. If it's a situation where it meets every day, it might work. If it's a situation where it meets only part of the week, it probably won't work.
Right, and that, and, you know, talking about Doc's schedule, you know, if his, if the block, the skinny block is longer, and they don't meet every day, then he still may meet the requirements for what that, the Carnegie unit is, without it being, you know, and the schedule, like, the three, the three with a month off, and it's still allowing for the remediation. And they have shown, you know, Hazel Green High School has shown growth in there, you know? So, some of the stuff that they're doing is obviously working, you know, it's just, you know, we just need to make sure that we're doing everything that's mandated by law.
I, I like the idea of having a minimum in our policy. I like this idea quite, I don't wanna speak for, just myself as a board member, but I would like to know what those numbers are before I vote.
That, that's what I was gonna say, would, would we be more comfortable, and I hate to table something else, but would we be more comfortable tabling this until we had more information about the Xs?
No, that, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, what, my whole point with getting you guys something right now, was cause I wanted to let the principals know that what we're trying to do is, we're not changing the A B format, so that they can go ahead and generate their schedules. This, this whole, this whole change here is all based on the amount of time that's needed for the, the, the Carnegie units.
Yeah, I'm not gonna speak for everyone, but I, what you have done is great, but I think it's just the, the, the time that we need to s- the numbers, we need to say the numbers.
And, and as, and as a precaution, if we're gonna use a skinny block for a Carnegie unit, I think that that should be some type of, uh, notification to the director of high school curriculum, or something like that, so that we don't make a mistake. And so, you know, we, they, they have to show up, principal, or the, uh-
Has to be signed to all those.
Registration on a block schedule.
That's the requirement, cause what I don't wanna do is, good intentions, so, say, okay, well, we think we got enough, and then when somebody who has a reasonably critical eye looks at it and goes, oh, you're five hours short, sorry, kid, I don't wanna do that.
Right. Yeah, I think you gotta have those minimums, but, and I-
I'm all for the idea.
Yeah, no, I'm- Agree, I think it needs to be, but my, the only thing I'm still getting, if we do that, are we gonna take out that language, that it can only be used for re- or is it extension? I mean, is that language gonna prevent, if they go to a five-day, you know, all year long to get those hours to meet that, are we ta- are we gonna restrict them from doing that if we leave that language in there?
Well, that, or you could, you could add the language and just that, or otherwise it's approved by director of curriculum.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, that's just a, a question.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, the way it's in there right now is, is because we weren't gonna- Yeah, that, I mean, that, the way it's in there right now is, is because we weren't gonna, we weren't meeting a credit.
Right.
Unit, but if they're, you know, and that's something we'll have to talk about, you know, I don't wanna say that, you know, and again, we're getting back now into, well, if we're gonna run forty-minute blocks or fifty-minute periods, why aren't we considering a seven-period day? And put everybody on a seven-period, then you can run your, your A Ps will be all year long and everything else. So again, that's a conversation for another day, that's not a conversation for now. But it opens up the door that if it's, if it's necessary, if it's good for at-risk kids or low remediation kids, and it's good for high-end kids, why isn't it good for the middle kids?
I like the idea of sticking with what we got. I would feel much more comfortable making a positive vote on this if I knew the numbers.
But we'll, we'll work with our high school principals and we'll try and get this figured out as far as the numbers. You know, we can do a mathematical figure and give, give you a number, that's not a problem. The question is, is, is that going to work with our principals, and that's why I wanna make sure that we have the five of them in the room so we can say, you know, cause, you know, what, you know, with Quinn's, in his schedule, it's different than what Jeremy does, which is different than what, you know, um, Lovell does, which is different than what Todd does, which is different than David Manning.
So they're all doing things that work for their school, I mean, that's.
Right, we wanna make sure that we, we set whatever the minimum is, so that it works for that school, but it still meets what we need to do for the state.
Gives them a little bit of freedom.
But in all that, we don't wanna get rid of mediation, do we, Doc?
Get rid of what?
Remediation.
Remediation, yeah. And that's, I mean, that's why reason our report cards are gone, you know, so.
Well, and they use the cert really well at Hazel Green as well, as far as, you know, so there's, there, you know, you can go to any one of our schools and you can pull out pieces that they're doing fantastic.
Right.
You know, and they're implementing something unique to them that's just, you know, doing wonderful, so. But we do, we just need to make sure that what we're doing is meeting the minimum by the law.
And I agree, and I think we need to, the message needs to be that we're, we're going with block next year, but we're working on the numbers. That way we can go ahead and start what we need to start.
Well, and I shared with each one of their, their reviews that, you know, my intention was to leave the policy as is, but we were gonna work on, on the times, because, you know, that was there, obviously it was clear that there is a time issue.
So.
We're gonna motion to table?
Yep. I have a motion to table, line item G. I have a motion. I have a second, I have a motion and a second, do I have any more discussion? All those in favor, favor, alright.
Alright.
All those in favor to table, line item G.
Can I just add, when we do that, Ms. Bass, that language about that, to see if we put somewhere in there where it doesn't restrict, if something works. If they, if they're meeting the minimum requirement, can we just put that on some of the notes to look at? If, if they're meeting the minimum requirement in that skinny block.
I think if they, like, we're kind of calculating over here, if, if they had a skinny and did five days a week with no remediation.
Yeah, it should work.
They would have the minimum.
Right.
But if they pull out two days a week, they wouldn't have the minimum. So, so that's why we'll need to have that conversation of just kind of how we can make it look now if.
Yeah.
I don't know. And I think the biggest thing is, we only had one high school that wasn't, didn't have at least eighty minutes minimum in the block for every block.
Yeah, I'm totally, I mean, I know we gotta meet those numbers.
That we have an issue, I just don't want anybody to think it's widespread that we have an issue. Um, but there's been little adjustments, you know, a longer break or a little bit longer for lunch, cause of the population size, and that, those minutes matter.
Absolutely, yeah.
Um, but yes, I think once the conversation is had as to whether it can be done, um, then that'll be up to Mr. Kew.
It's just, mine's, I'm just, the, the language in there, if we go, if we get the, if we get the minimums on both good, where they do it, and we leave the language in there, then I feel like that restricts them from doing something that works for them, but.
I believe your point in that.
I'm just, I'm just leaving that up to you, if we can just look at that.
Yeah, and, and you're right, with that language, it, it, it. They would have, well, even if it is though, even with remediation, if it's, if you're in, if you're having a student in a class because they're struggling in a area that's still remediation, but it still comes back to, they've got to be in that five days a week for the entire year, based on forty minutes in order to get to where they need to be, and that's the problem. If you're cutting any of that time for whatever reason, now you're, you're shortchanging the, and that's where, and that's where it's gonna get creative again, because, you know, with, with what Doc has said, you know, it's helping in a lot of ways, but those kids aren't getting a full credit by state standards for that year-long skinny.
I, I'm, I'm all for, if we can use the skinny for addition credit, I'm all for that, but I really would feel much more comfortable with, particularly, particularly uh, this year, if we make this requirement, that be reviewed by our director of curriculum, particularly our high school curriculum, and uh, kind of sign off and make sure that we got the right minutes, and there's not a, a honest, simple mistake.
But we'll, we'll get with the high school principals and we'll get some stuff worked out, and we'll, there's, there's no doubt in my mind that we can get this worked out as far as that, as far as finding out what we need to do, what the skinny needs to be, and what the, or the fifth period, and what the, you know, the, and again, it can be minimal, if they wanna extend their day or whatever, you can do more, but at least having that minimum to say, we know that you're getting
Yeah, meeting, meeting enough.
So we're tabling this to the March seventh work session?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try, we'll try and get something by March seventh, the work session.
And like I said, I, I probably shouldn't say this, but I, I, I feel like we're good, it's just, just wanna say a number.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, y'all ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Alright, thank y'all, uh.
I recommend approval of the contracts or services as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend approval of personnel items as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor?
I recommend approval of the assistant principal probationary contract as submitted.
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any discussion? All those in favor? Well, that concludes our.
Nice having you.
That concludes our uh, regular session. We have an executive session to discuss a real estate discussion. Real estate matter, and, yes, and soon as we come back from there, we're not gonna be voting on anything, we're just gonna adjourn. But we need a five-minute recess before we go to executive session. Bill's gone. I need a motion, we go to executive session.
Motion.
Motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, I have a motion and a second, we go to executive.